To this ordinary meeting of Mount Isa City Council. The time is nine oh one a m and I now declare this meeting open. Mount Isa City Council would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet, the Kalkadoons, and pay respects to elders, past, present and emerging. And I'd also like to extend that respect to any of Australia's First Nations people in attendance today. There's no doubt that last year we turned one hundred and this year Mount Isa Mines turns one hundred. But the Kalkadoon people have been here for sixty-five thousand years looking after this pristine country. Please note that this ordinary meeting of Mount Isa City Council may be livestreamed and recorded in accordance with the council's recording of council meetings policy. As a visitor in the public gallery, your presence may be recorded. By remaining in chambers, it is assumed that your consent is given if your image is inadvertently broadcast. I'd now like to invite Pastor George to grace us with a prayer today. Thank you.
Good morning and thank you Mayor Danielle and the councillors. And it's always an honour to come and open with prayer. And you know, just quite a few things that come to my mind as I'm heading toward this moment. But as I think I always pretty much, I can never get away from just coming to this place and honouring the people in these roles of involved with the council. And you know, thank you for what you do in the community. And some people find it easy to criticise, but I find it easy to honour you for stepping up and taking some of those slaps. But yeah, I just want to encourage you. And it's a significant day today, I suppose, because election coming up. And so I'll be very non-political and make that a prayer point. And I just want to present a verse of scripture before we pray. That there was a king in the Old Testament who called out to God for help when some very powerful nations were coming against him and his kingdom. And he cried out to God for help and got some pretty powerful help. And then there came a time after he'd been a king for thirty-six years that he got attacked by a king. And instead of crying out to God, he paid a big bribe to another king to come and deal with his attacker, which went by. And God sent a messenger to him. And part of the message was, you've done wrong. The eyes of the Lord run to and fro throughout the whole earth so he can show himself strong to those whose heart is toward him. And the king didn't like that message, so he put that prophet in jail. Yeah, that'll fix it. But yeah, I just want to encourage that, you know, there's a lot of impossible things that council faces. Sometimes we think that, yeah, we got this, we can do this, we can do that. But there are a lot of, lot of things going on in the community that we don't have the resources, capability, wisdom or knowledge to be able to deal with some of those things that are more community, society sort of issues. And there's a lot of stuff going on in town here that, you know, without getting into detail, there's people who have lost their life recently. Last year and this year, there's been stuff going on that I've been sort of well aware of and been, you know, I know the people, a lot of the people personally. And some of those ripples from those things are spread to a lot of people. And those sort of situations are impossible. We think of the challenges for the police, they've got an impossible job. They need God's help, God's wisdom, God's knowledge, same with the hospital. There's so many things and I reckon we can all do with a download of wisdom and knowledge from God. And the verse I just quoted, God is looking for people who are open to that. He's not looking around to criticise, he's looking around for people whose hearts open to Him. So let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to bring you into the picture. And Lord, we look to you because you are the one that can make a difference where we have no ability to make a difference. We thank you for your offer of wisdom and knowledge. Your offer of wisdom that we can't get anywhere else. So Lord, as we think about the council meeting and the deliberations that go on even today, we just speak with your wisdom, your knowledge, to be involved in the deliberation so that the outcomes are good, worthwhile and productive. We thank you for the sitting members of all the mayor and the councillors. And so much as that is up to change, potential change, Lord, we just speak your favour for those results. That it's, Lord, you know the ones who are best fitted for the roles. And Lord, how can we make intelligent decisions when we don't know all the facts that we really need to know? And so we thank you, Lord, for providing this community of Mount Isa with the people that you choose, that your favour falls on. And we thank you for the success of this council. And we thank you in anticipation for the success of the incoming councillors and mayor, or maybe the same mayor, whatever. And we thank you, Lord, that you know. And we want to trust you for your choices. And Lord, we lift up, I could just mention so many things in this community where the community is hurting. And we, we don't know how to address those hurts, where people have lost their life, where there's been disagreements and really serious things going on. And probably a lot of people don't know that, but, but some of us do and our hearts ache when there's so much trouble, but you can bring peace and reconciliation. We just want to mention the police force and the challenges they face. A difficult job, oh, there's an impossible job. And we just speak, Lord, your wisdom and knowledge for them so that they can bring much more success and resolutions in the situations they face. Lord, there's elements of lawlessness in this town. And we don't want to get too specific here, but we just want to hand it over to you and see the miracle of what you can do in people's hearts and lives. We lift up the hospital workers too. And I think it's pretty much a given that they're always running on the limits and on the point of being overloaded at times. And Lord, all those hospital workers in all different capacities, they need a download of your grace, your ability to be part of the miracle that you can bring in the health and wellbeing of people that are challenged in that area. Lord, we think of the schools, the challenges they face. Well, they need a download of your grace. And by grace, I mean a supernatural dimension of ability to do the impossible in the classroom. And Lord, we thank you too for the day-to-day opportunities that the council workers, not just in the committee meetings here, but the ones who are on the ground doing the physical work. Lord, we thank you for their dedication to the job in front of them. And we just, we just speak, Lord, that they can have a download of your grace, your ability to do their job with willingness and that they be rewarded, Lord, with your favour, not just in their workplace, but in their families and in their homes. Oh, this town needs an overarching supernatural hand of protection and favour. And we just speak that, Lord, to just offer over this whole community. And I just want to close with a great thankfulness, Lord, to the rain that we've been having this season. And but I notice that that water level of the dam has just dropped below eighty-three percent. And with all the rain we've been having, I would have thought that it would have been more than that. But we know something a little bit about how these things work. And I think it's about twelve or thirteen years since it has overflowed over the spillway. And Lord, what about, we just want to trust you that maybe this year you can just demonstrate your favour. And this can be the year where that dam can overflow rich capacity. And Lord, we just pray against unnecessary damage and flooding. We thank you for your favour to this community in that regard. And we just thank you, Lord, already for the blessing of showing your favour by that dam getting full. And so thank you, Lord, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor George.
I appreciate that prayer. It didn't go too long.
No, that's fine. This is the last ordinary meeting for this term. So it was a lovely prayer to go out with. Thank you. Thank you Pastor George. Okay, that takes us now to apologies and leave of absence. Would someone like to, thank you. councillor Streton isn't here. Does someone want to move a motion?
Yeah, just to clarify, councillor Streton was going to dial in and apparently the internet's gone down in Corumba. So it'd be an apology unless he gets the internet back up again.
Okay, so does someone?
I'd like to move a motion that I apologise for councillor Streton being absent due to no internet being available.
Second.
Thank you. You beat me to it. All those in favour? And that's carried. All right, that takes us to public participation. And I see someone in the gallery with a notebook, so I'm assuming we've got at least one. Is that right? No? Okay, no. Okay, thank you. I should have come and asked before. And that then takes us to item five point one, which is the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the twenty-fourth of January twenty twenty-four. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held the twenty-fourth of January two thousand and twenty-four be confirmed as a true and correct record.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully. Any comments on this one?
No, thanks.
All those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us to six point one, which is the, sorry, I just get it the way. Outstanding actions for previous council meetings as of the twenty-third of February two thousand and twenty-four. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
Yeah, I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council receives and notes the outstanding actions from previous council meetings as at the twenty-third of February two thousand and twenty-four.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you councillor Fortune. Any discussion on this one?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. It's just an outline of the decisions by council that have been enacted on by the administration and the status of each of those. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. That now takes us to declarations of conflict of interest. Any councillors in attendance today that see they have a conflict of interest?
Yes, I do. I'd like to note that I perceive conflict of interest in item thirteen point four, out-of-round sponsorship requests on to Club of Mount Isa due to the fact that I'm now on the board.
Thank you.
I'll be leaving the room.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I also have a conflict of interest with thirteen point four, out-of-round sponsorship request from Zonta Club of Mount Isa. I've been asked to speak at the Junior Women's Night on the eighth of March. So I'd like to, I don't want to be involved in this decision.
Thank you. And if you do become aware of any conflicts, just speak up as you become aware. Okay, so this is the, so we're now to the merril minute and this is the last official ordinary meeting for this term. So I'm compelled to share my experiences as a council over the past four years. I find myself facing a pivotal choice, remain silent and perpetuate the troubling cycle, or speak up in the hopes it brings about some meaningful change. The one point I want to emphasise is how unsafe I felt during my time at council, which as a full-time councillor served as my workplace. Having worked in the mining industry for twenty-five years, this was the first time I felt genuinely unsafe. I've endured an ordeal that no one should ever have to face, dealing with sexism, harassment, verbal abuse, defamation, bullying.
Mr CEO, can I move to suspend, please, this meeting?
Councillor, I caution you, I'm entitled to a merril minute, councillor.
Through the chair, it says merrily.
Shockingly, there is zero protection for councillors who are subject to genuine bullying, targeting, ridicule, stalking and harassment under the current system. As councillors, I'm not recognised as employees.
I don't think there's any.
Councillor, I'm putting you on caution. I will ask you to leave the meeting.
Yeah, but you can't just rattle on. You just can't rattle on about stuff that's not true.
No, it's my merril minute. I'm entitled to a merril minute.
It says nil.
Thank you. I have endured an ordeal that no other one should ever have to face, dealing with sexism, harassment, verbal abuse, defamation, bullying and even intimidation and stalking. Shockingly, there are zero protections for councillors who are subject to genuine bullying, targeting, ridicule, stalking and harassment under the current system. As councillors, I'm not recognised as employees. They are deprived of the safeguards provided by our workforce, by work cover and industrial relations. This leaves individuals like me in the position of either resorting to the Crime and Corruption Commission or even the police. Many of the tactics and actions deployed against me are carefully executed without witnesses, making our times incredibly difficult to substantiate the claims. What has saved me is to record meetings and interactions so I can prove my version of events when the complaints arrive, which is legal under the state government. The individuals responsible for these tactics are not angry community members, but rather my own councillors, as well as certain staff who align with them. While I'm more than fine with strong, passionate and robust debate in the chamber, it is another matter entirely to be taunted, abused, harassed and intimidated, and even monitored and stalking. Such behaviours are unequivocally unacceptable in any genuine workplace. In my, in my case, the abuse stems from a politically aligned power alliance comprising of long-serving councillors and aligned with complicit senior staff. I have become a target simply because I fell out of their politically aligned group and have dared to question the status quo. Councillors do have the ability to lodge complaints regarding breaches of the councillor code of conduct. If a councillor is found guilty or not guilty, the findings are returned to council where a kangaroo court scenario unfolds, allowing the very councillors and staff who conspired in the first instance to sit in judgment of you or their politically aligned colleagues. There have been two OIA complaints that have been sustained by independent investigator and then have come back to council to have their mates vote not to accept the findings. I've also had a complaint come back against me not sustained and the councillors have found me guilty of an allegation that was never part of the complaint. The complaint system is being exploited by both councillors and staff as a political weapon to undermine and destroy the credibility of their opponents. This toxic culture perpetuated and enabled by staff and CEOs is one that no other workplace in Australia would ever tolerate. It is a culture that demands immediate attention, necessitating the establishment of effective systems to safeguard the wellbeing of councillors. During an ordinary meeting held on December fourteenth twenty-two, a motion was put against myself by councillors, which was not even part of any formal complaint. In October twenty-two, an investigation report concluded that there was no inappropriate conduct on my part. However, despite this finding, the councillors who had met multiple times on this found me guilty of an accusation I was unaware of. According to the council investigation policy, which upholds the principles of natural justice, I am entitled to be informed of any allegations made against me and given the opportunity to respond. Unfortunately, I was not afforded this right. And as a result, my human rights were violated by the actions of this council. I've reached out to the Minister of Local Government to request a review of this motion passed on the fourteenth of December two thousand and twenty-two in light of this human rights breach. As part of the motion, it asks me to admit inappropriate conduct, including removing my calendar access. I did remove my calendar access to everyone at council and this is the first time I've been given the opportunity to address it. But this was months after the initial OIA complaint was lodged. This complaint was lodged by, on the twenty-second of March twenty-two, by David Keenan, the same day I asked him to write to the media and the parliamentary inquiry and let him know that he and councillors had given them fictitious figures. Mount Isa hadn't spent two hundred K investigating councillor complaints. At the time it went to the LGA conference, we hadn't spent anything in five years. I confirm inappropriate conduct on the part of the CEO David Keenan and councillors and certain staff. Mr Keenan had been harassing, harassing me and monitoring my activities, asking staff on many occasions to record my movements and interactions inside and outside of council and provide him with file notes. I have been provided with recordings of Mr Keenan spreading false information about me, telling staff of fictitious things I have said and done, defamed my, my family and worst of all, my children. He's engaged in insulting behaviour towards me and also staff who failed to show him loyalty. Despite having recordings and witnesses to these events, I lacked the necessary protections to address this issue. It is concerning that the councillors failed to take action against Mr Keenan's behaviour despite being the only ones empowered to do so. I'm aware that some councillors colluded in formulating the resolution against me, a fact that I inadvertently discovered and cannot disregard. The harassment by David Keenan was such that a member of the LGAQ likened it to domestic violence situation, only this was workplace violence. At one point, I had to tell my husband that I was convinced that I was going to be struck. And although this was horrendous, it would be the end of a long, 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 long session of abuse. And I would be able to lodge a complaint against the police. I was not only being stalked and harassed by the CEO, I was also being harassed and bullied by councillors and staff who thought they were being protected by councillors. I got through this ordeal because I knew I had been voted in by the Mount Isa community and that I was working for them and I was their voice. I have never been more honoured and privileged to represent my hometown of Mount Isa as their mayor. As this is the last ordinary meeting for this term, I want to take a minute to acknowledge a few things. And firstly, there are so many staff at council that I would like to thank for your help and support. I've learnt while being at council that there are staff who love and are absolutely devoted to Mount Isa and they work hard and they only want the best for our city. I want to thank them on behalf of residents for all the time and effort that they put in looking after our community. I want to thank the community of Mount Isa for their support. I know council doesn't always get it right, but we are your council and we want the best for our residents because ultimately we live here too. I also want to thank our neighbouring communities and councils from the North West to the entire West and including council in Cairns. The collaboration has been wonderful and it's great to meet people who want to work together and support each other as ultimately we all need each other. Lastly, I wish to, I wish all the candidates running for council all the very best of luck. There is no doubt we need new people in council who want to be the voice of the community and work together for the best interests of our great and beloved Mount Isa. Thank you again, Mount Isa. Thank you.
Mr CEO, can I just place on record that there's a lot of untruths being said by the mayor just then? So I'd just like that placed on record that I deny any of those allegations that have just been said by the mayor? Councillors?
It doesn't go on record. Thanks anyway. The next one is twelve, we'll move on to the corporate services report, which is twelve point one, which is the finance overview report for January two thousand and twenty-four. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Councillor, please keep calm. Keep calm or else I'll ask you to leave. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Hey, 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 excuse me.
Councillor, do not interact with the public gallery, please.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
Councillor, please.
You can't comment from the public gallery.
What's your language and what's your, you have a code of conduct to follow?
Yes, and you do too, and you have a code of.
Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Through the chair.
No, no. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Are you moving the officer's recommendation?
Through the chair.
Are you moving the officer's recommendation? Then please don't say anything else, yes or no.
Please follow the code of conduct in relation to members of public in galleries, please. Thank you.
Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Would someone like, councillor Tully, face forward, please? Councillor Tully, face forward. Speak to the microphone if you're going to say little snide remarks. Speak into the microphone if you want to say sorry remarks because I've had enough.
When's the apology coming?
Is someone going to move the motion? Councillor Tully, one more time and I'll ask you to leave the meeting.
What motion are we moving?
It is the corporate services reports twelve point one. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Oh, hang on a sec. I'll move the council receives and accepts the January two thousand and twenty-four finance overview report as presented.
Can I get a second, second for that motion, please? Thank you. Deputy Mayor, any comments on this one?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. So we've got rates notices have been issued for the period January to June twenty-four, issued on mid-February twenty-four. The figures are there in front of us and showing a net result of eleven point two million at the present time. And the things worth mentioning are the, there's some fees that haven't been raised in the ERP at the moment, which is a new software program for council. There's some QRA floodworks funding that's been received, which is, takes us over budget by fifty-nine percent at this point in time. And the water dividend is yet to be received, which is under, showing under, under budget at the present time, but that'll flatten out towards the end of the financial year.
Any other comments on this one?
Couple of other items. Madam Mayor, the notices of auctions for sale of land properties were issued to six properties on the ninth of February. And auction dates for these properties will be released and displayed in accordance with the requirements of the local government regulations, two thousand and twelve, closer to the time of auction.
And we've had one paid for, haven't we?
It's all in confidential, Madam Mayor.
I'd also like to mention that council is, council is currently in debt by sixteen point two million, which is quite a healthy balance in terms of outstanding debt. And we've paid down that debt to that level over this term without borrowing any additional funds. And we've got unrestricted cash at the present time totaling thirty-four point two million.
Thank you. Any other comments, councillors? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to twelve point two, which is the corporate services overview report for December and January two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yeah, I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council receives and accepts the December two thousand and twenty-three and January two thousand and twenty-four corporate services overview report as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you councillor Tully. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yeah, sure. Madam Mayor, the administration team have been quite busy as normal. So there's the figures there for calls and there's a noticeable step up into January. About fourteen hundred calls I've taken during the month. There's, the majority of the items were probably between. There's, the majority of the items were probably between water and sewage and local laws items. And then also revenue and waste management followed closely behind was the, the items of interest. Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments on this one? All right. All those in favour? And that's carried. This then goes to item thirteen, which is a community services report and thirteen point one, which is a splashes overview report. Councillor Coglan, would you like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the January two thousand and twenty-four splashes overview report as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, councillor McCrae. Councillor Coglan, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, nice and busy as usual. I'd just like to thank Shay and her staff for all that they did for Australia Day. It was a bit of, it closed a bit early due to the weather, but like we've said before in meetings, this is something that we can't get around because people's safety comes first. Just like to shout out again to all the people with the, the Move It program. You can do aqua aerobics or the swim fit sessions. Now, these are free, free lessons and free sessions, so I'd encourage a lot more people to get down there and have a go at this. It's good to see all the schools are back doing their swimming lessons at the pool. And I'd just like to ask a question through the CEO. The, I know we're waiting on the slide to get here and it should be here in April, but the grass surrounding that slide area, we've been very lucky that we've had rain. Is that connected at the moment or are we, it's just keeping green because of the rain? I just didn't want to be in the same position as the Family Fund Park and have the dead grass around where we've got little kids near water. So, yeah, we might have to bring, if the water is cut off there, we might have to look at something else when the rain does stop to keep that grass green, please. And that is all. And, oh, it's great to see the Isar Heat are back in the pool swimming. So if anyone wants to join the swimming club Wednesday nights, is there, their night where they do all their races? But it's a great little club and I would encourage a lot of people to join it.
Thank, thank, thank you, councillor. And yeah, I concur. There's a lot of snakes around at the moment and the pool is quite close to that Likeheart River, so it would be good to get that grass cut. And no one would have heard Stephen Jewell because he hasn't, his microphone wasn't working, but the, he is hoping that the water slide will land here in early March, which fingers and toes crossed if that ship gets in. All right. Thank you very much for that. And that takes us now to thirteen point, sorry, two, which is economic development overview report for January. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation? Oh, didn't we? Sorry. All those in favour? And that's carried. All right. So that takes us now to thirteen point two, which is the economic development overview report for January twenty-four. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
Yeah, I'll move that council receives and accepts the January two thousand and twenty-three economic development overview report as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, councillor McCrae. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak?
Thank you. Yep. So there's been a few things that have unfolded. The growing the regions, round one, round two, stage two. We've received advice following application for expressions of interest have been successfully outbacked eyes a revitalization project and the Mount Isa Library redevelopment project. So that's been moved to stage two. The economic development strategy is, is moving forward with the engagement of the consultants to work on the pillars that we've, we've established for holding Mount Isa in a good stead in the next few years. So that'll be good to see the results of those. That's all I'd like to mention. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments, councillors?
Yeah, through the chair, I'd just like to give an update about the advisory committees. The mine workers memorial advisors advisory committee, no meetings were held in January. A final detailed design drawings have been completed for Frank Aston Hill. However, the city centre RV parking strategy is still under development with council's contractor. It is anticipated that the report will be completed and presented at the April council meeting. For the motorsports advisory committee, no meetings were held in the month of January. Council have accepted the feasibility study at, at the December council meeting. Next steps for the committee is to explore with stakeholders the feasibility of holding a series of motoring events. Discussion to date has included a go-to-woe competition, a burnout competition, a street car drag racing and building on the already popular Show and Shine event. Council will endeavour to further review funding opportunities for the regulatory requirements to be considered and look to provide support where possible for the promotion of ongoing motorsports events. Future budget considerations for the regulatory requirements will be required as per the feasibility study and would include baseline flora and fauna survey, ecological assessment, impact reports, assessments and cultural heritage and traffic impacts assessment report and a core infrastructure report. Once the above has been cleared, a further business case will, can be developed in, in support of any further funding submissions. For the Lake Mundara Advisory Committee, no meeting was held in January. A further meeting will be scheduled to update the Lake Mundara Advisory Committee once the Mount Isa Water Board provides further detail on their proposed five-year strategy. And that's an update on advisory committees.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Do we know what's with the Lake Mundara Advisory Committee? That seems to have just halted. Do you know what, do we know why that sort of hasn't progressed anymore?
Be a question for directors through a chair. I'm not a part of that committee.
I can probably comment on that. I stepped up to chair that committee once some guy mires resigned. The water board went out to community consultation and they wanted to take charge of what was happening out at the lake. So they've been holding a couple of meetings, was it last month? I think it was the month before. And I think moving forward, they'll be driving that agenda.
Okay. So have they said they didn't want a advisory committee? I didn't hear that.
Um, no, no. They'll be still inviting the advisory committee along for input.
Okay, thank you. And councillor Barwick, with the, with the motorsport one, we haven't had a meeting for such a long time. What do you think's going to?
Actually, that's not true, Madam Mayor. We have had meetings in, in recent months, but the,
When was the last one, do you think?
Oh, I'd have to check the dates of that. It wasn't long ago. What I'd, what I would say is that we're now in an abeyance period because the feasibility's been accepted by, by council and the plan that's outlined in that. So the next steps are to take, you know, there's an ecological survey, also an environmental impact study and also cultural clearances that need to be done on the site out there. So that's going to take some time and as I understand it, the, the development team are working on that. And so once they come back and the results of those come back, then we can move to bring the advisory committee back in to have a look at that.
How long do you think that'll take? Because this, this has been, we've been waiting on this for a couple of years already.
Well, we have. We've been waiting on probably for fourteen years, if you want to look at it like that. But the, when they come back, the, I mean, those things need time to, to be, to be conducted. And then the reports need to come back and be assessed by, by the officers in council. So basically, that's an in-house operation at the moment. So when, when we see the results of those, you know, we'll be able to draw the advisory committee back together then to have a look at it.
Thank you. All right. Is there any other comments? All right. All those in favour? And that's carried. So that takes us now to thirteen point three, which is the community development overview report for January twenty twenty-four.
I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the January twenty twenty-four community development overview report as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you. Councillor McCrae, any comments?
Yes, I'd like to talk about the repairs and maintenance. It's, it's, it's great that they're getting the civic centre lift repaired. I think that's really important to be able to continue to hold events there. Also, the kitchen upgrade is getting costed up. So that'll be great to have a fully functioning commercial kitchen at the civic centre. And also the flooring is going at a procurement to replace the civic centre flooring. I'd like to congratulate the winners of the Australia Day ceremony, citizen of the year Rick Lehman, young citizen of the year Leana Woodsby, senior citizen of the year pastor Keith Christie, senior sports award Caitlin Hankin, junior sports award Malaya Retavart, community event of the year Mount Isa show and the arts and culture award Brian Adamson. I'd just also like to point out that Move It NQ is still going really strong. Feedback from other areas, when I speak to people is, you know, they're quite jealous of the broad array of activities that we have here in Mount Isa. We're still doing aqua aerobics, dance fit, fitness boxing, Pilates and yoga. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I think the one thing you missed was the sign on expo and I thought that was fantastic. I think it may have been our biggest one yet, so it was really great to see, I think it was sixty-three stall holders. There were seventy-five, seventy-five spaces booked and look, it was massive. So I really hope some of these sports got some of the advantage of hosting that from, from the council. So that's great. All right. All those in favour? And that's carried. All right. So this, I believe we've got two people with conflicts of interest for this one, thirteen point four, who are leaving the room, councillor McCrae and councillor Coglan. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
Through the chair, I'll move that council approves sponsorship to Zonta Club of Mount Isa in the amount of five thousand dollars, including GST, to be a diamond sponsor of the twenty twenty-four International Women's Day celebrations to be held on Saturday the twenty-fourth of April twenty twenty-four at the Mount Isa Civic Centre.
I've got twentieth of April.
Saturday the twentieth of April.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I thought you said twenty-four. Sorry. No, all good. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second, Barwick.
Thank you. Councillor Fortune, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yes, overview, the Zonta Club of Mount Isa have submitted an application for sponsorship from Mount Isa City Council outside of the scheduled rounds in February and August. Due to a restructuring of the event, they were unable to make an application in August. And an application in February would result in funding being retrospective, therefore ineligible. Their application for consideration found out of rounds funding was approved by CEO.
Thank you. Any other queries on this one?
There was a discussion around the out of rounds and the circumstances leading to it. The circumstances were acceptable and there's been advisory, I guess, to any out of rounds applicants that they follow the criteria and submit their sponsorship applications in due haste.
Yeah, thank, thank you, councillor Fortune. And for me, there are some, some events in Mount Isa that are absolutely no-brainer that we support. And, you know, I think, you know, we're going into a new term. Some of these organisations should approach Mount Isa City Council for a two, a three, two, three or four-year deal so we can lock it in because they're absolutely no-brainer. And I know every time they put a sponsorship package together, it takes a lot of time and effort and it's usually mums and dads and people who are really, really busy doing that. So maybe, you know, some of the no-brainer ones that we always support, they could look at perhaps putting a, a package together that we could support over a couple of years and just take a bit of, have that surety of funds coming in so they can plan the next couple of years as well. That's just my thoughts. All right. All those in favour? And that's carried. All right. If we can bring the councillors back in. Okay. So that now takes us to item thirteen point five, which is Opera Queensland Regional Tour of twenty twenty-four. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
I'll move that council approves sponsorship in the amount of eight thousand eight hundred dollars, including GST for the presenter's fee for Opera Queensland's two thousand and twenty-four regional tour performance of Do We Need Another Hero, to be held in Mount Isa in May two thousand and twenty-four and that council authorizes the CEO to approve in-kind support as required to assist with the delivery of the event.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Councillor Coglan, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Oh, look, I just think this is a good opportunity. Opera Queensland, they conduct regional tours every year and delivering opera basically to people that can't really get to opera in the big, out in the bush and that. I think it's a great initiative and it would be well received. We just need to make sure we market it properly to everybody and it just gives a good chance for people to actually go and see opera that they wouldn't normally be able to see. So I hope everyone supports it in Mount Isa.
Any other comments?
Yes, I'd just like to reiterate that the Opera Queensland bought us the Are You Lonesome Tonight in twenty twenty-one and Lady Sings the Maroon in twenty twenty-three. Both those performances were excellent and the only feedback we got were not enough people attended. So I just want to reiterate what councillor Coglan has said, that we really need to market that and let people know when it's on.
Absolutely. And I think that's the, the main comments I'm getting in the community now. They just don't know when events are on and that they're missing out all the time. So ideally, we needed printed paper. That would be the answer to all our prayers because at the moment we are, one of the things we did talk about, and I just can't remember how long ago it was, was maybe putting some of these things on the radio. Is that an option for us, Tim?
On the radio?
Yeah.
Yeah, we already use the radio.
You already use the radio for a lot of these ones? Because I think it's a shame that people miss out just because they didn't hear about it. Yeah. All right.
Sorry, Tim, I just through the chair, just the, the in-kind support. So is that the higher or?
Yeah, that'd be things of that nature.
Just sometimes that in-kind support gets a bit out of control, so we just.
Thank you. Okay. Without further ado, all those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us now to thirteen point six, which is the PCYC request to change scope of approved grant. And this is a Ruby program. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council approves the change of scope to the PCYC Ruby Rise Up Be Yourself program to permit a further extension to the approved grant to thirty-first of the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, councillor Tully. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Thank you. So the PCYC are having some challenges in finding a female instructor for the program. So they've requested an extension to the program through to the thirty-first of January two thousand and twenty-four. As I understand it, there's no change to the funds for the project. It's just an extension to the original program. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one?
So just to clarify that, they're asking to extend it. The, extend it to the thirty-first of December two thousand and twenty-four, is that correct? With the money they haven't spent? Is that correct? So what, while, while that, they would not be able to apply for other funding until this one is seen through?
Well, they can apply for other funding to the council.
Okay.
Okay. If there's no other questions, all those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us to thirteen point seven, which is the RADF, the Regional Arts Development Fund Council initiated project. Someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
Yeah, I'll move that council endorse the RADF committee's recommendation to install a mural at the western facing wall of the Splashes Aquatic Centre as a RADF council-initiated project.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Thank you. It's a extension to the RADF work that's being done around, you know, providing arts in, in various ways to the community, including performing arts and statue, stationary art. So this mural. So this mural has been identified by the development group from council and also from the RADF committee that that there would be a good place to do a mural like this on the Splashes wall there, and as part of that precinct, the family fun precinct over there. So it's been highly recommended, and there's money in the budget to actually carry out this project, which is around estimated to be the twenty to thirty thousand. Thank you.
Any other comments on this one?
Oh, sorry, you go.
Um, through the chair, I'm just wondering, is there a list of, like, RADF projects that you're working through? Or is there anything, like, a coordinated, I don't know, I don't know how you come up with the projects? Is there a list or?
Yeah, sure, there's always two or three projects that are in the pipeline, but they're at various stages, and some of them just don't go ahead for different reasons. We did want to do a mural on that wall in the car park down near Pharmacy First there, you know, the big wall, but we, there was a few barriers to that, so we didn't go ahead with that one. So, you know, we just work on different projects.
Yeah, 'cause I'm just wondering, wouldn't the RADF funding, if it's for arts, that could also be appropriate to fund that Opera Queensland?
For which, sorry?
The Opera Queensland that we just voted?
Yeah, it certainly would be, yeah. It never came across the desk, though. I think historically, council's actually funded that separately, which has been probably a bit of historical stuff there, but it's just performing arts, and there's possibly no reason. The only thing we'd have to be a bit careful of there is if Arts Queensland are already funding it to a certain extent, whether they would want RADF funding under the guidelines to be used in addition to that, you know, because it's coming from the same bucket eventually.
So this twenty, thirty thousand, that's within the RADF budget, is it? How much, like, you've got that in the RADF budget?
Oh, there's ample there to cover that. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's ample there to cover that, yeah, is my understanding, yeah. I mean, Chad might be able to, the director might be able to give us more detail on that.
I don't have the immediate figures at hand, but it's correct that the proposal is within the existing budget of the RADF fund.
Okay, so if both the councillors come up with projects, they're able to then apply for RADF or pass them on to the?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah. We're always seeking ideas, and in fact, some ideas haven't come through from the committee, they've come from other sources, including internally at council here.
Thank you.
Do schools know about this funding?
Yep.
And all community organisations as well.
RADF's been around for years, so.
Yep, okay. I'm not going to support this initiative. I just, that's an awful lot of money to put on a wall when the outside of Splashes is, we've got gardens there that aren't even connected. It always looks untidy. I just think until we can do something with the outside of it first, I just can't put my hand up for twenty to thirty thousand dollars for a painting. Until we get more seating and get the gardens organised outside so that looks more appealing.
I'd just like to respond that this money can only be used for artwork. It can't be used for landscaping or any of those sorts of things. So, and I understand what you're saying, and I believe that they should be addressed as well, but that's got to come out of the Capital Works program, I would imagine, for council, yeah.
Yeah, through the chair, any art in community spaces is great. It adds colour and vibrancy to the community. It has an effect on the state of mind of individuals who visit the area. I think a classic example of that is Centennial Place. It's very colourful, very bright, and it leaves you with a good feeling when you visit and, you know, have a look around the amenity there. Any sort of art in community spaces, whether it be on a tank, on a hill, on a building, on a street, or even, as we're suggesting today, will have a positive mental effect on our community. So I'm very happy that this has come to council for endorsement.
Who does the design?
That's usually asked through from the artist, you know, there's some concepts given to the artist and.
Will it have any history of the pool on it, or is it going to be?
Look, we can feed that in if that's something you would like.
Oh, I think if it's on the wall of Splashes, it should have something to pay homage to the house Splashes was, all our swimmers. You know, not like an Outback scene, because they are going into a pool.
Yeah. Well, the purpose, you know, is to make, you know, create a sense of community and a sense of colour and a sense of vibrancy down there at the area. So if that can be, you know, translated into some historical value, I don't see why it wouldn't be able to be included. They're pretty good, those guys, you know, yeah.
I actually liked that idea of councillor Coghlan's. It does sound great. And there's been a lot of people who have gone on to do great things who have competed in that pool, so.
Through the chair, I'd just like to add to that. Once the artwork went on the actual entry there, it did decrease the amount of graffiti there. I haven't noticed graffiti since that went up, and it did, like, brighten up the whole area, so, yeah, the more public art, the better, I feel.
Yeah, there's a school of thought that says that that does reduce graffiti, but, yeah, it's proof in the pudding, I guess.
Okay, any other comments before we vote? All right, all those in favour? Councillor, do you wish you?
Yeah, I'll have mine.
Recorded against?
Recorded.
Okay. And that takes us to the thirteen point eight, which is a library overview report for December twenty-three and January twenty-four. Councillor McCray, would you like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
I'd like to move that council receives and accepts a December twenty-three and January twenty-four library overview report as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Councillor McCray, would you like to give us an overview?
Yeah, it's been a couple of months, so there's a bit in this one. The Summer Reading Club, one hundred and thirty-five children participated in the Summer Reading Club, so I think that's outstanding, and the library staff are to be congratulated with that. Eleven school holidays activities were organised during the summer break. The library team performed at the city council's Christmas show. Northwest Hospital and Health Service child health nurse will join four of the library's baby rhyme time and storytime sessions for the first quarter in two thousand and twenty-four, and the nurse provides professional support and advice to the parents and weighs and measures the babies. So that's also a great initiative, health working in with our library staff. I was actually lucky enough to get along to this one. The library invited Dr Bethany's Tooth Tales to be a guest storyteller. That was a great event on a Saturday morning, and heaps of people came along, and the idea of that was to try and stop little ones being scared of visiting the dentist. Dr Jane Garner from Charles Sturt University has approached the library to do a research project into how urban, regional, and remote public libraries in different states of Australia are supporting people experiencing homelessness and insecure housing. So I think at this time throughout Queensland, housing is a large issue, so it's great that we're working in with Dr Jane Garner. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McCray. Any other comments on this one? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us now to thirteen point nine, which is the development and land use overview report for quarter two.
Through the chair, I'll move that the recommendation that council receives and notes the development and land use overview report, quarter two.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
McCray.
Thank you, councillor McCray. Yeah, sorry, I was just asking the CEO if councillor Tully did have a conflict of interest with this one, just getting advice from the CEO, because he does have two property, sorry, I'm just talking. What did you say? Sorry, I can't hear you because you're not speaking into the microphone.
Through the chair, it's a view report.
No, sorry, councillor Fortune, we're not up to you yet. Councillor, please, I can't hear you because you're not talking into the microphone for a starter.
Through the chair, it's.
No, no, councillor Fortune, I haven't finished with the last part yet, so please, please.
It's a report.
Councillor Fortune, I'm not up to you yet. Okay, I'm just getting advice from the CEO. It's up to me to question it. I'm allowed to question it.
Well, it's up to the councillor themselves, but there's no decision being made. It's just a review report.
Okay, so there's two, there's two properties here that are just for information only, and they do relate to a councillor here, and I was just querying whether that was a conflict of interest while we're within my rights to do so. Councillor, if you don't feel like you've got a conflict of interest, you don't have to raise it.
I haven't got a conflict of interest.
All right.
As in the workshop last week, and you were fully aware of that.
Well, you left the workshop last week with this one.
Sorry?
You left the workshop last week with this one.
Yeah, but.
So you left it in the workshop, but you're not leaving it in the meeting.
The CEO, because there was no.
Well, that's why I'm.
Excuse me, I'm talking, sorry.
Can you talk into the microphone? Can you talk into the microphone, please? All right, then, well, we can't hear you if you're not going to talk in the microphone. So all I'm saying is, last week, you left the meeting declaring a conflict of interest. This week, you're not, and I was asking the question of the CEO, that I'm entitled to do so.
Correct.
Okay. Any comments about this particular?
So we have a second through the chair?
Oh, sorry, yes.
I think I did.
Thank you. Through the chair, I'll just give a brief summary of the report. So with the development applications during this quarter, council received five development applications and approved two. There's been no change in the number of applications received from the previous quarter, which was five, and no change from the previous quarter in the same quarter in the last financial year, which was also five. Council received three boundary clearance dispensation applications and approved five applications during this quarter. This is a decrease in the number of applications received compared to the same quarter last financial year, which was four. With the building applications, a total of fifteen notice of engagements were received by council during the quarter, a total of twelve building applications, sorry, twelve building approvals were issued by private building certifiers this quarter. This is a decrease compared in the previous quarter, being eighteen, and a decrease compared with the same quarter in the previous financial year, being thirty-six. Of the twelve building approvals, there was a total of fourteen structures for which building permits were issued. The total value of building works approved from Mount Isa local government area for this quarter was thirteen point one six two million dollars. This is an increase of six point seven, six point seven six two million compared to the same quarter in the last financial year. With the property searches, as council received a total of thirty-two property searches, requests for the quarter, this is a decrease compared with the last quarter being forty-nine, and a decrease compared with the same quarter last financial year being ninety-two. Of the thirty-two requests, twenty-three were for residential properties, six were for commercial properties, and there was zero requests for certificates of classification occupation. Land use and tenure, a total of four council trust land tenure agreements were issued, one council trust land tenure agreement was surrendered, council endured one request for a liculance, one land tenure application, and zero reserve tenders. During quarter two, twenty-three, twenty-four financial year, council received zero dollars in reserve fees as council has not issued invoices for these quarters. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Any comments on this one?
Yes, I do. When I was at the Barclay the other week, I think the manager there asked me if I could follow up this application that's here now. It says it's seventy-five percent complete. Are we able to give any sort of timeframe on that? Because I think they're looking, once that redevelopment's done, at employing fifteen extra people, and I think that would be a great boost in confidence for the town if we could get that up. Have we got a timeframe at all?
Just on that, the last discussion I had was it's a referral, so it's got a main roads referral on to the highway, which is sort of outside of our control, so I can't give an actual timeframe, but that's one of the referral agencies.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, is that through TMR, is it?
Yeah.
Anything further, councillors? All right, so let's vote. All those in favour? And that's carried. Item fourteen, Infrastructure Services Reports, fourteen point one, Water and Sewer Overview Report for December twenty-three and January twenty-four. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
Through the chair, I'll move that council receives and accepts the December twenty-three, January twenty-four water sewage overview report.
Can I get a second for that motion, please?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Councillor Fortune, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
I'll just go through the overview. Thanks, Mayor. There's two substantial sewerage spills took place in the previous two months. These were appropriately responded to and reported to the regulator. Significant maintenance work has also been undertaken. With the water network, there's renewal work, service replacement continues on Clark Street, Campbell Street, Carbine Avenue and Hillary Street. Fire hydrants were replaced on Camberwell Street near Worth's, North Ridge Road and Spence Street. Vowel replacement works commenced in January with valves replaced on the corner of Second Avenue and Sapphire Street and on the corner of Commercial and Enterprise Road. The valve replacement program for this financial year will be focused on replacing the older valves in Pioneer. Maintenance work, a number of reactive water leaks have been increasing with rectification, sorry, rectification, rectification times for repair of the road, often protracted due to requirement for traffic control. Emergency works undertaken include the repair and leaking of a hundred-millimetre main on Gray Street that feeds the renal unit, and a damaged two-hundred-and-fifty-millimetre trunk main near Townview State School that feeds the reservoirs on Healy Heights. With the reservoir cleaning, divers have been engaged to carry out a condition assessment to clean reservoirs one and three. This work was programmed for early December but was postponed until March. Traditionally, the reservoir will be taken offline and drained to complete internal inspections and cleaning. However, the use of divers and vacuum cleaning equipment renders this unnecessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this report?
Yep, through the chair. Can I just ask, the family fun park, the water testing there, through the chair, how often does that get done, and what are the results being?
Stephen, I might hand that over to you.
The water's tested daily, and the results have all been satisfactory.
Thanks, Stephen. Any more questions? All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. Now that goes to fourteen point two, which is a smart water meter contract closeout. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation, please?
Through the chair, I'll move that council note the current status of the water meter contract.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Councillor Fortune, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yes, thanks. The water, sorry, the smart meter contract reached practical completion on the twenty-ninth of October, twenty twenty-three. The project started in mid-two thousand and twenty-one. Although the contract wasn't finally signed until April, twenty twenty-two, what should have been a six-to-nine month, nine-month contract was protracted due to issues with water meter supply during and post-COVID. The final outrun cost of the project will be approximately four point four million, including some unsettled variations. There are still outstanding claims for variation totaling five hundred K, although not all of this will be approved. Actual expenditure on the project and approved variations to date is three point eight six million. Two of the approved variations were ancillary works, not directly associated with the installation of the smart meters, but carried out under the auspices of the contract.
Thank you. Any other comments on this one?
Through the chair, when it's up and running, people have been asking me about when they can check their water usage on their phone. So have we got any timeframe as to when that would be possible?
Yeah, I might hand that over to you, Stephen.
Sorry, Stephen.
Yeah, that should be in place by thirtieth of June. That was actually, even though when we went out to tender, we asked all the potential contractors to make sure they had that available, it wasn't actually part of the contract. So we're negotiating a final price with them now. It's pretty quick to install because it's a software installation, and all the data's already there, all the meters are already there. They can do it either by coming in through council and coming into a council system, or it can be separate, and we haven't resolved that, but I'm thinking probably separate because we haven't really got a council portal up and running, and that will delay it further.
Thank you, Stephen. Thank you, Stephen.
It'll be a completely separate thing. So yes, it will be on top of this. It's probably in the order of $40,000 to $50,000.
Through the chair, was that an oversight on our part that it wasn't part of the initial contract?
No, what we specified that it had to be available, but it was never part of the original contract because it couldn't be installed until the end of the contract. So when we engage a contractor, they had to have the ability to do that, but there was no point contracting for it upfront because there was a lot of variations. We could pick and choose different aspects. Or we could even go third party if we wanted to. So we kept it separate to give ourselves the greatest opportunity to do something different if we chose to.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is anything else on this one? Alright, all those in favour? And that's carried. Now, this takes us to a supplementary agenda. So if you haven't found it, just put your hand up and we'll help you pull it up. Has everyone got the supplementary agenda up now? Yep.
Sorry, I'm a bit immoral when it comes to computers. The other things do probably. Thank you.
Okay. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Counselors, just before we do that, can I just advise? So basically, the council is in caretaker mode at this particular point in time. So we've applied to the minister to allow us to award these packages, and it's been a ministerial decision to do so. They've pretty well allowed most councils who have got disaster relief funding arrangements to award during the caretaker period. The process has been changed a little bit. It used to be just that the minister used to tick off on the officer's recommendation and advise, but they've advised that they've allowed the council to make the decision in this particular circumstance. So it's covered under the attached letter.
Thank you.
I'll move, Madam Mayor, if you like, that council award package one, Camberwell Restoration Works to Durack Civil Proprietary Limited under contract number 202341 for the value of $1,972,769.49 excluding GST. And the council award package two, Camberwell Yurandangie Road Restoration Works to Brindle Proprietary Limited, trading as your employee, under contract 2023-42 for the value of $1,753,555.46 excluding GST. And the council does award package three, Thorntonia Yelvatoth Road, Olmay Downs Road, Gunpowder Road, Mount Oxide Road, Kajabi Road, and Duchess Road Restoration Works to Durack Civil Proprietary Limited under contract number 2023-43 for the value of $4,606,532.59 excluding GST. And the council award package four, Riversley Road and Riversley Lily Waterhole Road Restoration Works to Tees Plant Hire Proprietary Limited under contract number 2023-44 for the value of $2,752,488.80 excluding GST. And the council award package five, Thorntonia Yelvatoth Road and Gunpowder Road Concrete Works to Blackform Contracting Proprietary Limited under contract number 2023-45 for the value of $335,625.46 excluding GST.
Well done. Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, Counselor Fortune. Deputy Mayor, any comments on this one?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I think it's money that's been awarded to us just recently, and now we're able to channel it because of the ministerial approval, which we've gratefully received. And we'll get some of that work underway. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this one, councilors?
No, sorry, through the chair, I just was going through the tenders and the evaluations. It was a good job, well done. Sometimes those evaluations are pretty brief, and you can't get anything out of them. But that one was really good. So Stephen, whoever did that, good information. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no more questions or comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. Alright, if you go back to now your original agenda, we have nil for general business. And what I might do is I will read the recommendation to close the meeting using the following motions to consider confidential business items. So the officer's recommendation is that council considers the confidential reports listed below in a meeting closed to the public in accordance with section 254J of the Local Government Regulation 2012. 16.1, notice of intention to sell land for overdue rates and charges, lot 88 on Crown Plan... BH... sorry, MPH 22033, lot 14 on Crown Plan MPH 22013, and lot 20 on Crown Plan MPH 22110. This matter is considered to be confidential under the section 254JD and E of the Local Government Regulation, and that the council is satisfied that a discussion on this matter in an open meeting would, on balance, be contrary to the public interest as it deals with rating concessions and legal advice obtained by a local government or legal proceedings involved the local government, including, for example, legal proceedings that may be taken by or against the local government. 16.2, notice of intention to sell land for overdue rates and charges, property assessment 02897... double zero, double zero, double zero, double zero. 16.3, notice of intention to sell land for overdue rate charges, property assessment 03124... double zero, double zero, double zero, double zero. 16.4, notice of intention to sell land for overdue rates and charges, property assessment 02199... double zero, double zero, double zero, double zero. 16.5, notice of intention to sell land for overdue rates and charges, property assessment 02474... double zero, double zero, double zero, double zero. These matters considered to be confidential under section 254JD of the Local Government Regulation, and the council is satisfied that discussion of this matter in an open meeting would, on balance, be contrary to the public interest as it deals with rating concessions. 16.6, updated award of contract 2023 to 49, consultation of the diversification and transformation of the Mount Isa economy critical infrastructure. This matter is considered to be confidential under section 254JC and G of the Local Government Regulation, and that the council is satisfied that discussion of this matter in an open meeting would, on balance, be contrary to the public interest as it deals with the local government's budget and negotiations relating to a commercial matter involving the local government for which the public discussion would likely to prejudice the interests of the local government. Alright, can I please get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Barwick. All those in favour? And that's carried. I'd like to thank the gallery for their attendance today. We are now going into closed business to discuss those options.
The officers' recommendation that council moves out of closed council into open council. And the council decisions proceed as per order of business, 16.1. Notice of intention to sell land over overdue rates and charges. Lot 88 on Crown Plan, MPH 2203. Lot 14 on Crown Land, MPH 22013. And lot 20 on Crown Plan, MPH 2210. 16.2. Notice of intention to sell land for overdue rates and charges. Property assessment, O2897. Double zero, double zero, double zero, double zero. 16.3. Notice of intention to sell land for overdue rates and charges. Property assessment, O3124. Double zero, double zero, double zero, double zero. 16.4. Notice of intention to sell land for overdue rates and charges. Property assessment, O2199. Double zero, double zero, double zero, double zero. 16.5. Notice of intention to sell land for overdue rates and charges. Property assessment, O2474. Double zero, double zero, double zero, double zero. 16.6. Updated award of contract, 2023 49. Consultancy over diversification and transformation of maniser economy for critical infrastructure. Consultancy over diversification and transformation of Mount Isa economy for critical infrastructure. Can some move second that motion please?
Seconded, Coghlan.
All those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, and we are now back into open business. And that brings us to item sixteen, which is the consideration of confidential business items. And sixteen point one, which is the notice to sell, of intention to sell land for overdue rates and charges. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation please?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council resolves to sell land in below schedule pursuant to section one forty-two of the Local Government Regulation two thousand and twelve. And B, delegate to the Chief Executive Officer with power to A, give notice of intention to sell the land to all interested parties under section one forty-three of the Local Government Regulation two thousand and twelve. And B, take all further steps required under sections one four one, one four two, one four three, one four four, one four five, and one four six of the Local Government Regulation two thousand and twelve to effect the sale of land.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Seconded, Coghlan.
Thank you, Councilor Coghlan.
I didn't read the schedule in the motion. Shall I read the schedule?
Do we need the schedule?
I think we do.
All right, read the schedule.
Rates assessment, one triple zero four five nine six, two double one oh four two oh three. Lot eighty-eight on Crown Plan, M P H two two oh three three. Rates assessment, one triple zero six zero three nine, two double one oh double five nine eight. Lot fourteen on Crown Plan, M P H two two oh one three. And one double zero five two five four six. Billing account, two double one four double seven six four. Lot twenty on Crown Plan, M P H twenty-two one one zero.
Thank you Deputy Mayor and Councilor Coghlan.
Seconded, yep, Coghlan.
All right, all those in favour? And that's carried. That takes us to sixteen point two. Again, another notice of intention to sell land for overdue rates and charges. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council resolves not to start the sale procedures in section one four one of the Local Government Regulation two thousand and twelve for selling lot sixty-three on Crown Plan, M seven five eight one nine seven. Assessment number zero two eight nine seven, double zero double zero zero dash triple zero.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Coghlan.
All those in favour? And that's carried. Sixteen point three, which is again another notice of intention to sell land for overdue rates and charges. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation please?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council resolves to decline a grant, declines to grant a concession to the applicant under section one two one B of the Local Government Regulation two thousand and twelve by way of an agreement to defer payment of rates and charges levied on property assessment. Zero three one two four double zero double zero zero dash triple zero.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Okay.
All those in favour? And that's carried. Sixteen point four, which is another notice of intention to sell land for overdue rates and charges. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council resolves to decline to grant a concession to the rate payer under section one two one B of the Local Government Regulation two thousand and twelve by way of an agreement to defer payment of rates and charges levied on property assessment. Zero two one double nine dash triple zero double zero dash triple zero.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion? Thank you, Councilor Tully. All those in favour? And that's carried. And that brings us to sixteen point five, which is another notice of intention to sell land for overdue rates and charges. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council resolves to agree to grant a concession to the applicant under section one two one B of the Local Government Regulation two thousand and twelve by way of an agreement to defer payments of rates and charges levied on assessment number zero two four seven four dash triple zero double zero dash triple zero, subject to the following conditions. A, the rate payer must make weekly payments of one hundred and fifty dollars towards overdue rates or charges currently on the land until all the overdue amounts are paid. B, the first weekly payment under sub-paragraph A is due by the eighth of March two thousand and twenty-four. And C, if the rate payer fails to comply with sub-paragraphs A and/or B by making each weekly payment when it falls due, the concession automatically terminates. And the council may recover the overdue rates or charges in accordance with its debt recovery policy.
Can I get a second for that motion?
McCray.
Thank you, Councilor McCray. All those in favour? And that's carried. That now takes us to a late item, which is the updated award of contract twenty twenty-three forty-nine consultancy for the diversification and transformation of the Mount Isa economy for critical infrastructure. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move that council awards contract two thousand and twenty-three dash forty-nine for phase one consultancy for the diversification and transformation of the Mount Isa economy dash critical infrastructure to sign Advisory Proprietary Limited for the value of one hundred and eighty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars excluding G S D. And authorise the C E O to negotiate and finalise the contractual arrangements.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, Councilor Fortune. And again, this particular motion, we are actively seeking funding to retrospectively fund this. All those in favour? Against?
Could have it noted please.
So that's two, McCray and Coghlan. Okay, and that brings us to the end of this ordinary meeting. I'd just like to, as this is our last ordinary meeting for this term, I'd like to thank the Mount Isa public for coming along this journey with us over the last four years. We don't always get it right as a council, but the best intentions are there. And I personally wish everyone in the Mount Isa community all the very best. And good luck to all the candidates in the upcoming elections. It's great to see so many putting their hand up. The time is now ten fifty-eight A M, and I now declare this ordinary meeting closed. Thank you.